Call this meeting to order. I didn't even check, are we good? All right, at this time we'll call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson, Trustee Doral.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Landwehr.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Walshiger.
Here.
President Farnesel.
Here. If everyone, anyone that's got caps on, remove them unless they're ceremonial and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Myers.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't even know if I can do it.
At this time, if there are any public comments for items that are not on the agenda, any items that are on the agenda you can speak to at the time that those come up, any public comments for items that are not on the agenda.
Mr. President, I have one. About two years ago, or three years ago, when the past president, before he left the last month, him and the administrator passed the idea that we would remove the engineer from our planning commission. We removed the planning commission, put a representative in there, in that particular chair, and for the last two to three years, we've had nothing but problems with trying to come up with things from the planning commission, and Dick's mentioned many times, it keeps going back and forth, back and forth, because there's nobody on the planning commission now that has an engineering degree that knows what the heck our plans are, what we're supposed to be doing. And I would definitely like to have that looked at in the future, that we get our planning commission back to where it should be, with an engineer on it that's going to direct us novice when we're coming up with ideas for expansion or anything into our village. So, I think it was, I don't know, the timing just seemed, it was jammed through, wasn't really thoughtful, and I think it's something that we have to do.
I agree with Trustee Myers.
So do I. Thank you. Any other public comments?
I have another one. They shouldn't have put me up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Stop signs, parking signs, great, did everybody see the parking signs, the blue signs where to go for the park and everything, and it's really great. The only problem is there's the one going on by Dr. Munzenberger's office, there's nothing that shows that the parking lot is in that way, so if you're going westbound, you can't see it, there's no arrows on it, and I hope that we get those parking, you know, tell the people where to park, to stop the jam-ups downtown. I mean, I hope they get put in. I saw something, a memo that they're supposed to be ordered, I guess we didn't order enough to begin with, but those parking signs seem to be working, they've been very helpful for our events, and I'd like to see that, make sure they get completed.
All right. It is my understanding, I believe that those are on order, if they are not, we will make direction to order more where needed. Thank you. Any other public comments? With that, we will begin with our first item on the agenda, which is the introduction of new Heartland Fire Department officers. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Dave Dean, the Heartland Fire Chief, privileged and honored to serve. This evening, I'd like to introduce you to my current officer staff.
Is that on the...
It's catching up with you.
I'm not loud enough, are you saying? I'd like to bring up Division Chief Dave Jambritz, Division Chief Sharon Dyer, my lieutenants Randy Gilmore, Captain Sue Jambritz. This evening, we're very honored and privileged to announce three new officers in our department. We started, did I miss Lieutenant Fallon? Lieutenant Fallon, please. In the spring of 18, we started a recruitment process for officers and candidate testing. It consisted of a long process of interviews, physical agility, map tests, village questions, things that we felt important as an officer corps, that we wanted to see in our future leaders. And all the candidates did a fantastic job. It was a very, very hard decision to make, which is a very good position for me to be in with the outstanding membership that we have. So, I'd like to first introduce this evening as one of our brand-new lieutenants, Ms. Shayla Fallon. If you would come up. And would like to have a family member come up, or family members. We're very proud of your daughter, she's done a wonderful job, and will continue to do well, we are quite certain. So Shayla, on behalf of the Heartland Fire Department and the Village of Heartland, I'd like to present you with your lieutenant badge. I would like your father to pin that. The official pinning ceremony.
You guys just turn so the camera can see you. Camera's right there. I just wouldn't want them to get your back, it is a special moment, so.
It's you, it's a little taken.
Thumb text, fantastic.
It is upsetting.
It's upsetting, that's all.
Just not putting a massage on it for him.
This is a great moment.
Your brand-new shiny helmet, with lieutenant on the front.
Would you like to say a few words? Well, we're very honored and privileged to have you as a part of our membership, and we're very honored and excited to see your actions as a lieutenant, and continue carrying on your strong work ethic and great community service. Thank you very much. And Ms. Kelly, is Ms. Kelly in the audience? I'd like to introduce Pete Kowalski, our new training, or excuse me, our new safety officer, Lieutenant Rank, and we're very honored and privileged to have him watch over our well-being, and make sure our scenes continue to be safe, and you watch us very well, and you're never hesitant to tell us when hazardous conditions apply, and we need to make a change of action. So, very proud and honored to have you as an officer in our fire department, and we thank you for your service.
Thanks, Chief.
Sharp objects.
Not good in a fireman's hands. And we have future firefighters here coming up the line, so.
Yep, I gotta change your pins.
You need a Band-Aid.
Needs an axe.
Thank you, look forward to you continuing to serve and stay strong. Josh Orkuss, come on down. You're the next contestant. The day that we took the physical agility test, we had snow, you remember that day? And part of the course was the mile run, and I had to go and get my four-wheeler and blade and shovel the path or push the path open so everybody could run, that was my excuse for not having to run the mile. On behalf of the Heartland Fire Department's parents, pinners, everybody, Grandma, come on up, Grandma, this is a wonderful moment, we want you to share. Fiancee, who's also another, a member of our fire department. This is payback now. Grandma.
Let a mom show you how to tie it, right?
I won't let him pin, that's too close to the neck. Josh has been on a few fires, so his helmet is a little weathered. On behalf of the village and the Heartland Fire Department, and as your chief, I appreciate all your dedication, hard work, and enthusiasm that you show day after day, I appreciate it, and our department is better for having you in it. Thank you. I'd like to thank all the candidates that applied for the lieutenant positions. Again, it was a very extreme, hard decision to make, and if I could just have the members in the fire department stand up that are out here tonight in support of your lieutenants, I appreciate it, we have a very nice crowd, so thank you to each and every one of you, and thank you to the families that allow your loved one to have dinner interrupted, Christmas interrupted, birthdays interrupted, special occasions when you may be asking someone to marry you get interrupted, so we're very excited, and we look forward to the future of the Heartland Fire Department. Thank you, each and every one of you.
Thank you all for everything you do in keeping us safe, and taking care of all the things you do in the village on a 24/7, 365 basis, it is appreciated. I hope that the village is putting forth what they can to give you everything you need, congratulations. At this time, we have a proclamation honoring our DPW employee Dennis McCarthy on his retirement from the village after 28 years of service. Since he is not here, I will ask one of the supervisors or both from the DPW to come forward, as I will be asking you to carry this proclamation to him. In honor of Dennis McCarthy's 28 years of service to the Village of Heartland upon his retirement, whereas Department of Public Works employee Dennis McCarthy has loyally served the Village of Heartland residents for more than 28 years, having been hired in the Public Works Department on February 26, 1990, whereas Dennis McCarthy served the village as a DPW laborer with selfless passion as he always met the call for help at all hours of the day or night to dig up water main breaks, as a gifted equipment operator and snowplow driver, to keep that equipment ready for service as a mechanic in our garage. Whereas Dennis McCarthy shared his talents with the village as the go-to man for all manner of concrete and masonry work, including catch basin repair and curb and sidewalk replacements, whereas Dennis McCarthy has been an undeniable asset to our community, and while he will be missed, his retirement on January 2nd, 2019, after more than 28 years of service, is well-deserved. Now, therefore, the Village Board for the Village of Heartland hereby proclaims congratulations and thanks to Dennis McCarthy upon his retirement, and encourages all residents to join in expressing our tremendous gratitude for his service. If you are watching, Dennis, thank you. For any of you that were here to see the proclamation for Dennis, or even more so, for any of you that were here for firefighter ceremonies that choose not to see the rest of the village business and would choose to go now, it is not considered rude if you do so, that is completely up to you. However, as fun as these are, I can completely understand if you want to watch and see how the rest of this time at the meeting unfolds.
Boy, that was a real...
Okay, never mind, I changed my mind, I like to have a crowd. And then there was, oh, we got two, okay, no, we got four. All right, with that consideration, next item is a consideration of a motion to approve the Village Board minutes from the November 26, 2018 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve our vouchers for payments in the amount of $159,818.22.
What amount is that?
We got $367,000.
367.
Oh, I'm sorry, I pulled the wrong number. Approve the vouchers in the amount of $367,266.45. I'm sorry, my apologies.
Also move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on our vouchers for payments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Stand.
That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, we have a consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. First, we have consideration of an application for operators' bartenders' license with the term ending June 30, 2020. These are for Claire Herden and Scott Tracy.
Also move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those licenses are granted, that motion is carried. We also have an application for restricted species permit. The applicant is Madeline Preying and Jacob Canusel. These are at, the location is 200 East Park Ave, they would like to have four chickens.
Also move, will you approve it?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the species permit for four chickens. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. All right, the next item on the agenda, we have overlooked trails. Before we get to these items, there's three items that are included in this. Actually, I'm going to defer to our administrator and ask that he addresses the board, especially if the applicant is here and we weren't able to talk to him, so if he would, inform us.
So, sure, there are three items, as President Farnesel mentioned, two of them are related to the site plan, or one of them, rather, is related to the site plan and the related condominium plat, preliminary condominium plat, and the other two are ordinances that you've been looking at. One is the zoning ordinance, and the other is the annexation ordinance. As I mentioned in my material to the Village Board, as of this date, we have not heard from the department administration on its finding as to whether the annexation would be in the public interest. While I certainly don't think the state will come back and say it's not in the public interest, we have not heard from them yet. State law suggests that we, well, it doesn't suggest, state law says we shall have their input. Whether we listen to it or not is one thing, but we shall have their input. So, we have not received the DOA's comments as of this point, it's up to the Village Board how it wishes to proceed. It could conditionally approve the ordinances if it wanted. They have delayed effective dates anyway, it could decide to defer this, the DOA has until the 19th of December, we could put it off until that date, and by then, we would have their comments. So, it's up to the Village Board, really, at this point, what you want to do. The maps have both been updated pursuant to the conversations that have taken place thus far, the recommendation of the planning commission, and the actions that the Village Board took at its last meeting, so that's where we stand right now. No comment from the DOA at this point.
Since we don't have a meeting later in the month on Christmas Eve, I assume, okay.
That is part of your plan tonight, is to deal with that meeting.
Get rid of that one. I would think that we'd want to do it conditionally on the receipt of the DOA and its approval, to not hold things up a month.
Didn't you say that we have to have their input?
We do. I would like to, I think the most legal way for me to do this is request a tabling of this item until after the item on the agenda that addresses the meeting date. I've already talked with the village administrator, or maybe I can come out and say what I'm...
You could, I would suggest you do that, because...
Just say it?
Yeah.
All right, I will be requesting, we have a lot going on in the village, so when we get to that meeting item, which is much lower on the agenda, I will be requesting that, as opposed to a complete cancellation, that that meeting from the 24th of December on Christmas Eve be rescheduled to the date of December 19, December 19 being the date that the state has to get back to us by, so that we can then address that. There is, it is not only for this, there is other village business, but we have a lot going on, and holiday season or not, we're busy. And I will be proposing that. I'm not making that motion now, because it's not at that point on the agenda, but I am going to ask that we, we can take the item up now, but I will be asking the Board of that when we get there. As opposed to calling a special meeting, I'm just rescheduling it, if we choose not to reschedule it, then at some point, a special meeting is going to be called.
I can't believe that, that all this has been going on for three years, and now we're, there's always a kicker to it.
Hold on, Dick, 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 hold on. Stop. I'm going to take the floor for a second, because that's kind of out of order. We have to wait for the state's input, Dick, by state law.
What I'm saying is, why wasn't that sent to the state? Never mind, it's been, we're used to that.
We did.
He's used to coming on here.
Mr. Newman, if you have any comments on that, we sent it to the state immediately upon the last, if you could clarify, just for the Board and for yourself, for the public, we sent it to the state right away, they're just, why it's taking so long, I don't know.
I think the state has 60 days to review, if I'm not mistaken, so we don't really have an issue with that. I guess my question, just related to this, are we talking about six A, or are we talking about six A, B, and C?
We're talking about A and B, I believe so.
Well, at minimum, you could talk about those two things, yeah.
Let me clarify here.
I guess Matt is wondering whether you're willing to approve the preliminary condo plat and the site plan, and wait for the zoning and the annexation.
The zoning and the, is the annexation the only thing that has to go through the state?
The zoning? Annexation is the only thing that goes to the state.
Okay.
But we can't zone things outside of the corporate limits, so they're sort of tied together.
And that's what I'm getting to.
How can we approve it before it's annexed? Doesn't have to be annexed first, and then we approve it?
That's what the intent, that's what the intent was to do, is take those items back up once we have that state approval, and obviously, if you have...
Yeah, I think Dave made this point earlier, just to kind of reiterate it, all of these approvals are tied together, they're effectively all contingent upon each other happening, and so there's a series of items that we're going to be continuing to come back with in January, really, probably through March, to finalize everything before we can actually break ground on the site. Annexation is one of those items, so even if you conditionally approve the zoning and the site plan and the preliminary plat, it's still going to be conditioned upon annexation anyway, because you can't zone, or you can't approve a plat that you don't have in the village. So, we understand that that would be the case, for us, it's just a matter of making sure that we're getting as much accomplished as we can, and as I expressed, I think it was an email or a phone call with Dave, maybe last week, when we were saying, what are we going to do if the DOA doesn't reply by, you know, December 10, and we said, we are just trying to accomplish as many entitlements as possible for the simple fact that we have to release our engineer at some point to, like, do the heavy lifting of the final engineering out here, and as you all know, when you get into the holidays, things get busy, things get delayed, and all of a sudden, if, you know, we find ourselves waiting, and all of a sudden, they don't start until January, and so we just don't want to lose this work time realistically, and if we could get to a point where we have even conditional approval of the zoning and the PUD and the preliminary plat, we would authorize our engineer to move forward, because we're confident the state isn't going to have any major objections that would cause this to get stopped. I mean, it's been in the village's growth plans, I just, we've been through enough annexations in our time, that I feel like I'm not worried about that, but I understand the procedural process we have to go through, so we're just asking that we get consideration for as much as we can, and condition whatever necessary on that future annexation. If that's the 19th, so be it, I actually would be fine if that's January, from my standpoint, I just want to make sure we have the PUD and the rezoning conditionally approved, just waiting for annexation, so we can get our engineers going. So, whether you want to table it to later in the agenda or not, that's just a matter of whether I get to put my kids down, so I'm not worried about that, I'm just worried about if we can still take some action on B and C, even if we're waiting for A for a couple of weeks, that would be a meaningful thing for us.
Right, and I understand, I think that, well, I have to let the Board speak for themselves, the reason I had originally thought of that we were holding on, hoping that at the last minute, they were going to come through with something, and I understand what you're saying on conditionally, I just, I guess that means it's up to the Board, so it's not just up to me, a motion hasn't been made. I was kind of putting it out there that even if we conditionally approve B and C, technically, we still have to make that motion on the annexation.
Why don't you make sure, I don't mind coming the 19th or whatever day, but are we going to have it by then, and then we're going to have another meeting, and these people are going to...
No, that's the deadline, that's the deadline, the state has to, and if the state hasn't responded by then, we will take our own action, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm just saying, okay.
That was, I'm just trying to do it as real as possible, and I can understand from Mr. Newman's standpoint of saying, hey, we got to get going, I think you know, without even taking a vote, where this is going, just trying to take care of the pieces of, at that point, then we can get that all in place.
Is it prop, before I say I want to make a motion, make a motion to table this until we hear, at least until the 19th, so that we do everything in proper order, so that there isn't a mistake made, that all of a sudden comes back and screws everything up? Can I make that motion? Don't use that word, though, I'm sorry.
You can, I would suggest just postponing it until the 19th, because that's the state's deadline.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to postpone A, B, and C, is that right, until the 19th or we hear back from the state? Is that not right?
I would leave off the end part of that motion.
Okay.
I would do it just straight up till the 19th.
Until the 19th of December.
Because if we do not hear from them, we're taking action on the 19th.
Gotcha. Okay, so take on my last few words.
There isn't a meeting on the 19th yet, right?
Not yet, but there will be.
There might be now, I think there might be after this motion.
I can make this, I can make this very clear, the meeting for the 24th will be rescheduled on the 19th, or I will be calling a special meeting, we have other village business pending.
I'll second a motion.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone these items until the 19th of December for action.
To postpone A and B.
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
And C, all three. Yes.
Any other discussion?
Because they all got to fit together.
Yeah.
It's tough to do B and C, because we got to do the annexation, right?
Is there any reason to do the third reading tonight, or is that...
We are not going to do the third reading, because we're postponing it, we'll do the third reading, which, once we do that third reading, that's why this was kind of goofy, once we do that third reading, it already, it's moved forward that many times, this is going to become annexed, or at least that's the next step in that annexation process. Does that make...
It does, the third reading was not a public notice item, though.
Can I make that motion? Don't use that word, though, I'm sorry.
You can, I would suggest just postponing it until the 19th, because that's the state's deadline.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to postpone A, B, and C. Is that right? Until the 19th, or we hear back from the state? Is that not right?
I would leave off the end part of that motion.
Okay.
I would do it just straight up till the 19th.
Until the 19th of December.
Because if we do not hear from them, we're taking action on the 19th.
Gotcha. Okay, so take on my last few words.
Huh?
There isn't a meeting on the 19th yet, right?
Not yet, but there will be.
There might be now. I think there might be after this motion comes in.
I can make this, I can make this very clear. The meeting for the 24th will be rescheduled on the 19th, or I will be calling a special meeting. We have other village business pending.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone these items until the 19th of December for action.
To postpone A and B?
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
And C, all three.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Because they all got to fit together, haven't they?
It's tough to do B and C, because we got to do the annexation, right? So...
Is there any reason to do the third reading tonight, or is that...
We are not going to do the third reading. Because we're postponing it, we'll do the third reading, which, once we do that third reading, that's why this was kind of goofy, once we do that third reading, it already, it's moved forward that many times, this is going to become annexed, or at least that's the next step in that annexation process. Does that make...
It does. The third reading was not a public notice item, though. This is just a procedural question, I want to make sure we don't end up in a spot re-accidentally.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Third reading is just a matter of course.
We'll be back in nine days?
Yep.
It's less than two weeks this time. Usually we get a two-week break.
It's not fun coming in, you can phone in.
Oh, I'm sorry, you got to actually...
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried, we'll take action on those three items on the 19th. Thanks.
Now we can take action, then either way, if the state doesn't, if we don't hear from them...
And that's why I want it to be the 8th, 19th, yep.
Then we get them all cleaned up.
Next item on the agenda, we have a consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with the Labor Association of Wisconsin and the Heartland Professional Police Association with a term ending December 31st, 2021.
So this item is, as we've talked about in the past, this is a three-year agreement update with the police officers in the police department, that includes everybody who has the rank of police officer, as well as those assigned as detectives. It is the result of a number of meetings with the police union, and is really, there is nothing significant in here, that is nothing major in terms of change. Trustee Dora was at that meetings, meeting rather, or those meetings rather, and so she can certainly fill in if necessary. But as we discussed in the past, it's primarily updates to the language to make sure that it's clear and is reflective of practice that we're going through today. At the request of the officers, we modified some of the language related to their annual fitness testing. We reached a number of agreements related to those parts of the language. Additionally, it does set their wage adjustment for 2019 at the same level that the village board approved as part of the budget process, and as we have done for many years, continues the practice that annual wage adjustments will be determined rather than several into the agreement. So that gives us the opportunity to annually have a conversation with them, and that's been going well, and they have always agreed, knock on wood, they continue to honor the village board's decision as it relates to the annual wage adjustment. So, that's really it in a nutshell. If somebody has specific questions, I can certainly answer them, but otherwise, it's a pretty good agreement. They have been a terrific group to deal with. They're very, I'm going to use the phrase, pro-village. They're very much part of the team, and are willing to work with us, and basically get treated the same way the rest of the employees are.
I'll make a motion to adopt it, then.
I make a motion to adopt the proposed contract with the police department.
All right, I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried, that agreement's adopted. Next item, we have a consideration of a resolution 12-10-2018, a resolution to approve the suburban mutual assistance response teams agreement. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. For anyone not familiar with the SMART agreements, what they are, they stand for suburban mutual aid, or, I'm sorry, suburban mutual assistance response teams. It's really just a mutual aid system that the law enforcement set up regionally. It started out just Waukesha, Milwaukee counties, back in 1994, and this program has grown quite a bit over the last couple of years, where now basically all of southeastern Wisconsin's involved in it. So we have Jefferson, Racine, Walworth, Kenosha, Milwaukee, and then Waukesha County law enforcement agencies that participate in this program. So in all, there's 71 different law enforcement agencies, that's including the Village of Heartland, that's part of this. It's a tiered response, so depending on the type of incident you have, you call for a level, a different number of level of response, 1 through 14. Each level basically gets you five officers from whatever agencies you designated for each level. So for us, we start nearby, and as we get all the way through those levels to level 14, you're talking like Kenosha or Walworth County type agencies that are coming from quite a distance. This is used for events that would be, I guess, above normal type response. You're talking your weather disasters, they're used often, where you have a tornado in the area, SMART will get activated to try to bring some normalcy back and preserve any life safety or property loss. I've been part of SMART responses with the Zanna Spa, Seek Temple shooting, the Sheridan shooting in Brookfield before Zanna, so big, major events like that. It's not something that's used every day, but when it's, when you need it, it's there, and I really think it's a key piece of us being able to provide the village with the service everyone expects. So my recommendation, the reason for the updated agreement, is it really hasn't been touched since it went into place since 1994, and it's just trying to get all the terminology up to date with our current practices, and then also what some of the state law talks about when it comes to mutual aid. So it's just really an update, nothing really new procedurally. It's just really following past practice and current law. So my recommendation is that we would adopt the updated agreement.
For that, one question I have, for the SMART agreement, does this just include law enforcement? Okay, I didn't know, because, you know, sometimes you guys will activate, if there was ever an emergency in Heartland, you may request help from our fire department, you know, a task force coming from there, but this, the SMART agreement for Waukesha County and southeast Wisconsin, this is just the law enforcement that have been trained to act for like, the reasons that you said.
Correct. This is a law enforcement-specific agreement.
Okay.
For those of you in the fire service are aware of it, like the Mavis, those box alarms that fire uses, this is kind of similar to that, it's just an identified mutual aid system. So you're not trying to figure out your communication plan, or who can come. Everyone's signed on in this agreement that if you activate the SMART call, that they will come.
Okay.
How often should this be reviewed?
Um...
I'm thinking that since 1994 is a bit much, and I'm just wondering, is this an annual or every five years, so we can kind of...
So SMART does have a board, it's made up of different elected positions, including different county representatives from each of the participating counties. They kind of set some of that, but I know, as a participating member, I can, I ask for that to be reviewed more frequently than 24 years. And again, it's not that the practices were out of date, I guess just the initial agreement, and it really, if you look through my memo, I kind of talked through some of the things that they changed, and I think it was well-intentioned in 1994. It just went a little off of what state statute actually allows when it comes to mutual aid. Biggest piece of that is state statute allowing reimbursement. Typically, a municipality won't not ask for reimbursement, because you ask for it, and sometimes you receive the resource, but if it were to be something that caused a lot of stress to the system, you still could, under state law, ask for that type of reimbursement. So I think the spirit of the agreement was that people wouldn't charge, but due to state law, you can't put that in an agreement, because the state law says you can, if you're rightfully owed that money for the resources. So I think those are just kind of the things, that they were trying to just make sure they mirrored state law. So as far as practices that way, nothing was out of date, they were still staying up with best practice, but definitely, I think this is something that could be reviewed a little more routinely than...
Like every five years?
Correct. Sure. And I could bring that recommendation to our SMART board.
I'm just asking, I just think that we're trying to get everything set, so the board's aware of what's being reviewed, and when something's coming up, so that we're prepared.
Sure. And I'm pretty confident with the updates, I mean, there probably won't be any changes, but it does not hurt to review it to ensure that.
If we had a natural disaster, flood, train wreck, something like that, this wouldn't apply?
It could apply to anything.
Oh, okay.
If you need the resources, I was just giving some examples.
Okay. If you make the call, they're coming.
Yep.
Okay. Well, if you need them, they're coming.
And then insurance-wise, that's figured out with the insurance, like we send down the Racine, we're covered with our insurance, you know, that way.
Yep. Typically, technically, under state statute, again, one of the things that this looked at was, the requesting agency takes on that liability. So if they're calling you to go to Wauwatosa, Wauwatosa being the requesting agency, they would basically be on the hook for that response.
Right. I move that we adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Next item, we have a consideration of a motion to approve a two-year service agreement with Rooker Milky for village engineer services with a term ending December 31, 2020.
Can I bring something up before we even go into it?
You can, sure.
When I came back from, in the first November meeting, I had requested, or had mentioned that I had talked to some companies, and they were asking if they could, when our, this contract came up, if we could put it out for bid. Was this put out for bid?
It was not.
Why?
I don't know why, it just wasn't.
Is that not something we do?
Historically, that's, historically, that doesn't mean we can't. Historically, that's not something that Heartland has, historically, Heartland has not done that.
We did a couple times, we couldn't get anybody to come in.
I wasn't even aware, because I had asked, when is this coming up? Nobody seemed to know when the, when I asked in November. Nobody kind of knew what, when the contract was up. And I did get a call from someone that had said, you know, do you know when it's up yet? And I didn't know until this came out, because I said I would call them back. But it appears that we don't even have time now to get another bid.
That's not entirely accurate.
I mean, I'm not saying anything bad about our current engineers, I'm just saying that I wish it would have gone out for bids, so that we covered all our bases. I think being a municipality, it's a good idea to do that.
Good. I did look into it, and it's possible to get an extension if we decided to go that route.
That's just...
And we used to look into it.
I'm just letting you know.
It was just an issue that had come up, and I think it's a big issue.
And we used to look into it periodically, and then we found out that we couldn't change anything different, so then we didn't bother with it.
Well, I was changed.
But I mean, that's up to you.
We do have a member of Rooker Milky here, though, so if you'd like to speak.
I have to take a couple minutes, just for a little background and context as to what the agreement is.
Yeah.
So I'm Ryan Antman with Rooker Milky, I've served as your village engineer since 2009, so about 10 years. And prior to 2009, there were two companies here doing most of your engineering work. Rooker Milky was doing a lot of your sewer and water, SCADA and GIS work for 20 or 25 years. There was another company that was doing your more civil, streets, site work, development review type activities. And the village board and village staff back at that time in 2009 evaluated options and determined that it was not working very efficiently, having two different companies, where there was so much crossover between the various projects. So it was at that point in time that the board and the staff determined to consolidate that the one firm, and myself and our firm went through a fairly rigorous process of interviews and whatnot, and were fortunate to be selected. So we had really a two-year agreement, and the two-year agreement that was in place really establishes the work that we would do in support of the village. One of the advantages of the two-year agreement is we hold the rates firm for the two years, so you're effectively getting discounted rates with that sort of a setup. Myself and my primary project manager, who have done most of the work for the village in the last 10 years, our rates are both discounted, mine's discounted about $22 an hour, his is discounted about $15 an hour. So in that effect, you're getting an overall discount of about 5% on all the services. There's four or five individuals from our firm that do the lion's share of the work for the village, whether it's your public works projects, or helping with development review. But I also want you to know that over the last two years, I counted 17 different individuals from my firm who have inserted various levels of expertise to support your projects. Not a lot of time, but very different backgrounds. With sewer metering, sewage pumping stations, you've had water modeling done, water well work, you've had a booster station built, you've got a stormwater management plan that was done, GIS, SCADA, financial reviews, pavement management survey, AutoCAD, a whole host of various expertise that our firm has set up to handle. You use us when you need us, and you bench us when you don't need us. So, two or three years ago, it was quite busy with the wind rush and the four winds development, those were very active years. The last couple of years have been less active than that. You're ramping into some projects that are already underway, that are, have been on the radar for a number of years, that have all kinds of moving parts with it. So the agreement that we have now, which has been the last two years, says, I need to come to you and talk with you about, is there an extension or not? So that's why I'm here. And I understand that you're going to be undergoing a fairly significant transition with your DPW director, and who that's going to be, what their style is, what their experience is. So I completely understand if, you know, you need some time to consider who that individual is, and how we would relate to them. That's one thing that you'll find with our firm, we're very adaptable, and depending on the community that we're working with, different communities use us in different ways, and there isn't any one community that's been exactly the same forever into time. So you're going to change over time, and we need to be able to help you in any way that you need to, and we're adaptable in that way. So the projects that we do have underway, they're pretty critical, that they keep moving along, so that you can take advantage of the good bid times, which are going to be right after the new year. Your projects for next year are scheduled to be bid during February, so I would strongly suggest that you keep those going as you're working on your transitions, and how that might impact how you approach your village engineering services.
Don't we, as Rod Quick says, don't we, don't we have, didn't Rooker Milky always have somebody on the planning commission?
Yeah, well, that's actually...
You changed it just before the last election, the last presidential election.
That's in the agreement that exists, is for me to sit in that chair for no charge and support your activities, and whether I'm in a chair or in the audience, I'm capable and available to do that, to the extent that you need me to.
Well, if we did that, I'm surprised, because I must have been asleep then, because we always had that, that was part of the contract.
Well, he wasn't a voting member, but he was there.
No, but he was there.
But that's the thing, he's, he was.
He was a voting member.
He was a member of the plan commission, would have been a voting member.
Yeah.
And that was part of the conversation we had at the time, was, should the staff person, essentially, be a voting member of the plan commission?
And that's, if you, Dick, remember, the opening comments, that's exactly what I just said.
Yeah.
Can we fix that?
I just said that we wanted to, we have to get that back, because we don't have an engineer there anymore. We moved him out, and it's just been a pain, well, we haven't done very well.
Do you think that's the source of the problem?
Well, it's part of it.
I think it's a part of it.
Done.
And we couldn't have had too much discussion on that at the time, because I really don't remember eliminating that off, but...
It was a last-minute thing, and it had to be hurried through and, before the election.
Yeah. I think we should look into that, that just would be part of tack on that, because that didn't cost us anything anyhow. You were, with the contract, you were a point...
Well, they would get the amount that each member of the commission gets, I would imagine, correct?
Well, I don't know whether you got that, you know.
Okay.
See, you didn't get anything, that was part of the contract, unless you get, it's been changed.
No, no, no. I was wrong. The administrative side, I was wrong. Well, before we get to that, and I'm not saying I disagree with that, but before we get to that, we'll have to know if we're extending that contract, or if we want to put it, or if we want to do it in a different way, as opposed to just, you know, doing that, so someone's going to have to make a motion on something.
Can we amend this contract that we got here right now? Can we amend this contract that we got here right now?
No, no, what I'm saying is, we'll have to decide, right now the contract is, do we want him to be, do we want them to be our, our village engineer, or do we want to do something different?
What I'm saying, you could, you could accept this contract with an amendment and put him back on the Plan Commission, unless you want to discuss it.
Well, we'd have to take someone off the Plan Commission and put him on.
I assume that we adopt the, we extend the agreement. We.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Um, discussion, your motion, you got the floor first. I do want to say that I would, I hope that there can be a note of it, and I'll say to anybody that's on the board, I might not even be on, but to the board, I think it is in the best interest of the village of Heartland that the next time that this contract comes up, that this be bid out six months in advance from the, uh, you know, before it's going to be, so it isn't at the last minute.
Absolutely.
Six months before it needs to be voted on, which would be at about seven months. Just for, and if it's, you know, if there's no one that'll bid on it, fine, but I think that's.
I'd like to make sure that the, for agreeing this agreement, that we have that engineer back in his seat on the Planning Commission and not have some resident who is not an engineer.
Right.
Replacing that person who replaced him.
All right, well, why don't we?
Well, wait. Go ahead, Ray. The, the contract, I assume, still calls for you to attend all the Plan Commission meetings.
I took it out, but I'll put it back in, no problem. That's a change to the village code, just so you know, so.
What is?
To put the engineer back on the Plan Commission. We, I mean, we had, we, that was a part of the village code, so with all due respect, sir, it at least took two readings. That's part of the village code, and so if the village wants to put the engineer back on, we would just go through a process and change the village code back. And we can do that, certainly. And, and trustee Meyer has asked for that to be on the agenda, so we'll do that, but. And Ryan will add the language back into the contract to provide that service.
Did that, just asking, and I tried to ruffle, did that, was that two readings last night? Because I was here at the meeting, and I thought it got all done that meeting.
I'd have to look, but I would assume it's two readings, we've hardly ever done.
I don't, I don't remember that part of it.
It happened fast.
So, Steve, does he, the new ordinance or the new writing, can, can we put it back like it was and have him put back and the other person, whoever?
It's two, it's two separate things, we can request, as, as Ryan has stated.
Right.
To put it back in his agreement that he'll be at the Plan Commission meetings. And secondly, you can't just, you know, to change the village code and to change that. We can change the structure, but I mean, there's a process to it and it's not on the agenda. We could not do that tonight, because people from the Plan Commission that would want to come aren't even here.
I understand that.
But we could do that, we could have.
I do have a question, though, what, is it in the previous agreement and it was just taken out? I'm gonna, I'm just going to come out and ask, and I'm not, I don't want you to feel like you're on the hot seat here, but I'm being straight. If it's in the current agreement now, how come no one's ever at the Plan Commission? And I know this really is tough, but I'm going to come out and ask it, because if it's in the agreement, how come no one's ever at the Plan Commission?
Uh, well, when this changed, was it about a year ago, or a year and a half?
It was two years ago, because it was right before the election.
Two years ago, um, if, if I'm asked to be there, I'll be there. I was asked not to be in the chair.
Oh, you were, okay.
Yeah.
But that's, no, that's what I was, I appreciate your honesty, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, and that was not by me that you were asked.
But now, can, can he put that back in the contract and then we can do the, the later?
Yes, he can, Dick, I'm clarifying, you just answered and said he was asked not to be there, not by me. And I know he wasn't asked by the board, I just want to clarify, he was not there because he was asked not to be there.
Yeah.
Do you, did you hear that, Michael? Thank you, thank you very much. I would, I would ask that we amend to, that if we adopt, that includes that a representative, not necessarily Ryan, you guys. This will be someone from the, uh, from the village engineers would be at the Plan Commission meeting moving forward.
With voting privileges.
They, we, we got to take that up on a different agenda. Because you guys changed the code, it wasn't me, you did that three weeks before.
I'm surprised that you did that.
You did, I moved quick too, it took about thirty seconds.
That's probably, that went fine.
I remember watching it. Um, anyway, thank you very much, so, but I, I am asking that, that, would you allow that? Yes. Or I'm, I'm, would you allow that consideration, the amendment?
Oh, absolutely.
That, that be add, or, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, Dave? We've used it a million times before and I can't think of a word.
Are you amending the?
Contingent upon the fact that, uh, Rookert-Milke add that they will have a representative at the meeting. Currently, that would be without voting rights, it would be for information purposes. Thank you, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, to clarify, it is that we are accepting that, or that we are going to renew that agreement for the two-year agreement ending in, um, twenty twenty. The condition that it will be put back in and someone will be at the Plan Commission meetings. And if there really is no reason to be there at times, we may call and say, hey, don't worry about it this month.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your candid honesty, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just afraid someone's going to hit their head.
On the microphone?
No, on the screen, their, their heads are like two inches from the screen.
Oh, oh, well, the podium moves easier.
Yeah, I just, that's what I was, sorry.
All right, next item we have.
Now to.
Who?
Audience, Ryan.
That's how it is? By the time we get done, all that's left is the board, watch, watch what's going to happen when we go to close session. All right, next item is a consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with Fairgram of Plymouth for the twenty nineteen Department of Public Works Safety Program Development, Coordination and Training in the estimated amount of twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars.
Good evening.
Hello, Mike.
I'm asking for the agreement with Fairgram to be approved, um, to get back to a point where we have a, uh, current safety plan and consultant to do training and quarterly inspections of the, uh, facilities for DPW. We haven't had one for two years, and I think it's important that we have one on staff again, or on contract again, to provide those services. They're going to provide bloodborne pathogen, hazard communication, um. We're going to do CPR and first aid in-house with our fire department, because they are capable of doing that. Confined space entry, uh, um, personal protective equipment. They'll go over what we should have, what we have, and also how to use the equipment.
That's also something our fire department can't do.
Most of, they can do some, but they can't do it all. They can do first aid, they can do CPR, they can do, um, defibrillators, they can do that training for us.
What was the reason that this stopped?
Um, it just got lost in the wayside by, by us, uh, moving forward, missing personnel and the DPW director. And I couldn't keep up with it in the interim.
Is this in your budget?
Yes, it is. It's in the operating budgets of water, sewer and public works.
How long has it been since we've had a contract with someone for this?
About a year, year and a half.
A year and a half.
Yeah. And I'm trying to get it back to current and update.
I move we approve the agreement.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement, um, discussion? I just have a couple more questions, because I want to know the scope of, in, in my reading, and if I'm not mistaken. I believe that this is the item that the state necessitates we have this in place, is that correct?
Yes, it is, this, this training and, uh, to provide the equipment.
So, and I'm mandated.
Yes.
Uh, so it is mandated, and that's where I'm getting towards, but that, I, I'm just trying to, this isn't to put you on the spot. We've gone through a lot, I'm saying this to the people here and on camera, I'm not putting you on the spot, but it's important that, it's a major oversight, not on you necessarily, because it sounds like this happened sixteen months or fifty, whatever, a year and a half, whatever.
Yes, yes.
Ago, it's something that you inherited where it already wasn't in place, but it is, uh, in your opinion, I mean, it's just a major oversight considering it's state mandated, it's something we should stay on top of every two years?
Yes, no, every year.
Every year?
Every year.
Okay.
There's mandatory training every year in all these areas.
Do you know how it got missed?
I don't.
Well, you threw too much work on Mike.
No, no, well, this was before that even, I just don't, I didn't know if maybe they found something. Well, the former DPW director didn't do it.
But that's how the board knows about it, the board's got to be informed what's going on.
It will be yearly from now on.
Yep, and I'm not, I'm not throwing this at you, I just didn't know if you guys had looked into it at all to say, oh, so it sounds like it just plain old got missed.
Yes.
Okay, uh, secondly, I'm going to ask a couple of questions. You had said the CPR work and things of that nature, and in just trying to save the village money, I'm just going to come out and ask, because the agreement that I'm looking at.
It shows it in there, but we can remove any of those things.
Because they're, I mean, they're just for the, uh, um, just for the first aid and CPR training. Uh, you know, they're, they're charging a lot of money.
Right.
First aid and CPR certification is twenty-three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And they're even putting a minimum on fifteen people, I believe, or twelve people.
Right, and that's going to be removed, because that's something we can do in-house.
Yeah.
And I found that out talking to, um, Assistant Chief Jambrits, after I wrote the memo.
I would, are there any other items in there that you think that now you know we can do in-house that should be stripped? So save some money, just CPR?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys will take fifty percent off that force, won't you?
All right, uh, and the facility inspections are simply looking at the pump policies, all that kind of things that have to do with DPW?
Correct, just DPW and mainly, um, the garage. They go through and look at your extension cords and make sure they're not frayed, they look at slings.
Oh, okay.
They look at, uh, table, table saws, make sure they have the guard on them.
Yep.
Grinders have shields on them, uh, the crane.
Yep.
You know, they look at the crane to make sure it's up, up to date and certified.
All right.
Doesn't the state come in anyhow periodically?
Uh, I've seen them once in thirty-one years.
That's what I mean, we used to have, we used to have, well, I was just wondering.
Well, this is on YouTube, so they'll be here soon.
Good catch on.
I'm kidding.
So then it's still, it's, it's still a twenty-seven thousand dollar figure.
This is a good catch, and I do want to commend, uh, you guys that are the supervisors of DPW, that, that you caught it, that is good.
One other side note, this.
What's the, what's the, the contract with them, twenty-seven hundred dollars?
No, twenty-seven thousand. It's, uh, twenty-seven thousand.
Two hundred.
Yeah, two, yeah.
But it'll be a little less than that, because we're doing the CPR.
Just so, just so I know, that's, that's what happened.
Mike wants to add something for you, Dick.
You made a motion to honor this thing with twenty-seven, now we're coming along and saying, well, it won't be that. Just so you know what's going on.
No, 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 I know.
You know.
Uh, this is the, uh, firm that Dellafield uses, and I've talked to them, and they're quite happy with them.
Okay, all right. Can you report back in January to let us know, just so that we can see it?
Sure.
The motion's been made to, to approve this, has, we have a motion, correct? The motion's been made, but the CPR is being taken up.
Right.
Just for verification of the board, like Mr. Landwear was saying, and I agree with him, so that we can, just so that we know.
Sure, I can report back.
But, uh, it sounds like we want to do that, but it should go down some with that CPR training. So, uh, any other discussion?
If you're looking into that, the CPR part, also the, um, scope of work.
Mm-hmm.
I have to believe that some of these things could be done by our fire department in that section alone, and that's got quite a steep price on it for the program development.
Uh, the fire department really can't. The program has to be developed as one piece, so it's cohesive.
Did you, I, that scope of work for the program development is completely separate than the, um, the safety training, and I get that would be separate, the seasonal handbook, all of that.
Correct.
I'm talking for, um, emergency evacuation and fire prevention plan. I would assume our fire department would know a little something about that.
I'll get together with Mike and, uh, we'll go through the paperwork. I haven't had eyes on it up to this point, but we'll certainly go through it and, and do everything that we can, because, uh, part of this training also involves the fire department members.
Oh, the confined space entry?
The confined space entry, which these guys go into quite often, and, um, we're always notified of the entry so that we can be on standby or on the scene to retrieve them if needed. We constantly are monitoring the, the air quality and the airflow and things in the, in the holes. So it's a joint effort, and I will certainly be happy to assist in any way that we can get involved in.
We want you to be safe in the safest manner of, I mean, that no accidents do happen, obviously, so.
And I, I could be wrong on this, and in, in reading some of this, and I agree, I would love for the fire department to do as much as possible. I think what Mike is saying is, we're supposed to have a certain program specific to certain steps, and it hasn't been designed yet, and it has to be designed by a certified company. And I don't think that, I don't know if the fire department can do that, but they can definitely.
We've done that before, we've had, they've had to have had a program designed at some point, we've done it up to.
Right.
Just recently skipped, so there's been a program.
Oh, right, then what's the eight thousand for, for the new program?
They're going to, they have to write a new program, and they'll look at our old program and then rewrite it to meet current standards.
Current standards.
Every year?
Every year it's reviewed, yes. It doesn't have to be rewritten every year.
Okay.
And it states that in the memo, that the first year it's going to cost to, to write it.
Because we.
Future years won't have that component, because they're just, we're going to just review it.
Right.
It may be a minimal amount to review the program.
Okay.
It's kind of a one-time cost.
Again, because we skipped it for that, we haven't done it, so now we've got to re.
And it's a new company.
I'm surprised you did, because the state usually comes their own.
But I got you.
Mike, we get any other bids on this?
Um, no, I did not. I talked to our old company, uh, but it's just those two.
It just seems really steep, steep. Twenty-seven thousand dollars for training.
Well, then do you want to eliminate?
Well, it's not just twenty-seven for training, they're going to go through and they're going to look at our chemical inventory.
I brought everything, I, but it's still, in, in my mind, I can't fathom it taking that long in man-hours to justify twenty-seven thousand dollars, I mean, that's, that's a lot of cash. I mean, I'm not saying it's not a good thing, I'm just saying it just seems steep.
Well, maybe it should be looked over.
Even eight thousand to rewrite is, how many man-hours does it take to write, rewrite a program when they're looking at our old one? I mean, that, that's a lot of hours to rewrite something.
Yes, it is.
So to justify eight grand for it, though, is.
But if we haven't had this for a year and a half, and then we're trying to, we don't know what we're passing, we should eliminate this. Drew away with it.
Oh, I agree, but.
Put it on, and I, I second that, take it back off and then start over, so we know what we're adopting.
You're saying wait to adopt it until it comes forward with what's going to be in there?
Because you'd have to take it back off, because you got a first and a second on it.
Mm-hmm.
I'd have to take the second off, and she'd have to take the first off.
Or defeat it and then.
Yeah, we can just.
Well, you can defeat it too, if you want to, but just so you, this is where we get into a problem now. We get in there, we adopt something, and then a year later we come by and, well, you adopted or you discontinued it.
Mm-hmm.
And then everybody stands around wondering what happened. But that's up to the board.
A reconsideration can be made, but that's going to be made by the person that made the motion. If that's the route you guys want to go, I mean.
There are all.
That's the way it's supposed to be, but, I'm sure there are. Or pass, or pass, ask for a vote on it, and if it gets defeated, then you're, you're done. But you can't stop it in the middle of a first or a second.
We're not stopping it. Oh, no, I'll call the question.
We're talking about it.
Yeah, oh, no, I was just discussing.
You do whatever you want.
I can call, if the board wants, I'll call the question.
I think, Mike, the reason, as I understand, I don't mean to speak for him, but as I understand it, he had talked to the city of Dellafield, and that was one of the reasons he went with his company, because they were very happy with this company and the results that they got.
That is correct.
I mean, I'm just saying that's, I think, why they went, now, the fees is another issue.
And it is in your budget.
The work, it is.
Yeah.
It's actually split between sewer water and public works.
I don't know what to do.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Somehow, let's make sure that's on the, uh, next time, let's bid that out.
Okay.
Thanks.
Then you're going to come back with what we adopted.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right, I did it.
I mean, now we adopted this.
It didn't end up being part of the motion, but can you please bring it back in January? So that we can see what that cost was, it should be twenty-three hundred dollars less.
It will be updated.
Okay.
And if fire department can do some of it, we can reduce it even further.
Great, great, but what it's showing on here, yeah, for the first aid and CPR is twenty-three hundred, so hopefully it'll be twenty-three hundred less. Thank you. Um, all right, uh, next item is a consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with HydroCorp of New Berlin for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Utilities Cross-Connection Inspection Program in the amount of sixty-nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
So what we're looking here is to, um, get the cross-connection program started with this company called HydroCorp. Um, right now, um, the rules have changed for commercial, we have five hundred and eighty-five commercial buildings. And what we, we're looking to do is sign this two-year contract at sixty-nine thousand. And if you take it amongst our five eighty-five, our commercial buildings, it'd be a hundred and eighteen dollars a building to check for cross-connection to keep our drinking water safe. For a hundred and eighteen dollars, that's, that's a pretty good deal, considering that Arrowhead's probably going to take two days just to inspect Arrowhead itself, for God's sakes. So what, what they're going to look for is they're going to, um, backflow preventers, they're going to check them, So, what, what they're gonna look for is they're gonna, backflow preventers, they're gonna check them, they're gonna give a public education brochure so we could publish it on our village website. So, amongst them, on our own, we do twenty-seven hundred of them for a residential, and we just can't keep up with it, we can't do these commercial ones. It's administrative work, cuz you have to get a hold of them, and then you gotta make time when they can be there, these companies, and we just don't have the time and the workforce to do that. So that's why we're proposing to go with this company, this HydroCorp company.
I make a motion to approve the amendment, our agreement with HydroCorp of New Berlin to do the cross-connection inspections.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
I still don't understand what they do.
They keep it from cross, we used to check it, but when water is flowing one-way, you don't want garbage water, like water that's in your hose out in your yard, you would never want that to be sucked back in
To the water system.
To dirty water into your system. And all of a sudden, you're filling your coffee pot and then you got dirt from outside going, technically, most likely it wouldn't make it that far back.
They actually had an incident in California a couple of years ago, that there was a water main break outside this person's house, and the lady was doing laundry and she had her hose off her laundry tub in the sink, and it sucked her laundry soap right into the water main, and people around her got sick. Cuz they were, they were drinking, so when a water main breaks, the water actually sucks back, everything backs, backs up. So that's what, this company's gonna go in and make sure that they're up to date on all their backflow preventers, cuz some have to be checked every year in commercial buildings and some are two years. So they'll, they'll check that, they'll do a program for us and they'll, will give us, like I said, literature to, so we can notify our public.
Is this new?
We've actually had a company doing it, but they, they just can't keep up, and, and the standards change for commercial.
Okay.
It went to two years now, and that's a lot for, they have a big workforce, there's like forty employees they have, and the other one is a one-man firm, and he just can't keep up with it.
Was this bid out?
It was.
There are very few companies that do this that I'm aware of, and they approached us, they also do many, many other communities.
Those, those new houses, when they're built now, don't they have a system either that, I mean, like my hose, I'm not throwing, you're not supposed to throw it in the pool and then shut it off and leave it in there.
Right.
It's not supposed to be in there.
Right, well, outside hose bibs have the anti-siphon built in them, the newer ones? Yeah, so they can't backflow.
Cuz you always said, don't leave it in the pool.
You are correct. You are correct.
Well, that's alright.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item, we have a consideration of a motion to consent to the industrial service agreement, reference waste, water discharges with Medline Industries, Inc. as recommended by the Delhart Commission. I think that one speaks for itself.
I move that we approve the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
I just wanna say that Delhart's is there all the time checking that company out. I mean, it's a big item.
Okay. Well, yeah, Medline.
Yeah, it's big, so he's there a lot.
Yep. Next item, we have a consideration of a motion to release the Four Winds West letter of credit.
So, this was being held one last several months to deal with a, one of the stormwater ponds that was on the site that wasn't functioning correctly, that's been remedied, so we're ready to go ahead and release, so that's the recommendation from the village engineer.
I make a motion to release Four Winds letter of credit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have a consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney and the building and zoning official to initiate a circuit court action against the property owner at seven oh nine Cardiff Court for continued ordinance violations.
I make a motion to direct the village attorney and building and zoning official.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Just for clarification, the zoning official would be our village inspector, correct?
Yeah, right.
And the village attorney, this, do we have a specific group, would it be Hector Delamora that would be working on that, or is that a different?
Probably will be Chris Kenke, but it's Chris and Hector are in the same office.
Okay.
How did we get to a state like that? Where we have to take homeowner in court.
Did you read it?
Didn't you read the other times that we had it in front of us?
So, we've.
We've had that happen.
It's been building up over years.
Yeah, we've had that happen before, it takes two years before the guy.
Yep.
Usually, the other case, we had the fellow died and he moved before it got ill. It's, it's hard to get somewhere.
Yep. Alright, well, it's been.
And he's getting fined, he was fined already.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
You do.
Thank you. All in favor of moving forward?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion is carried for the village attorney and our building and zoning official.
Thank you.
Next item, we have a consideration of a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen village holiday calendar.
I still move we approve the two thousand nineteen village.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
You don't wanna meet on Christmas, huh?
Uh-uh. Nope, not preferably.
Yeah.
Not here, anyway. Consideration, next, we have a consideration of a motion to cancel the village board meeting rescheduled for December twenty-fourth, if the board will allow. I would say, let's reschedule that meeting for the nineteenth of December, I am making that motion to reschedule.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to reschedule the meeting for seven PM on Wednesday, December nineteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried, once again, I'm gonna say, cuz I see people grabbing their phones, very smart, please, we will, if possible, administrative cox for, quick, if you can send an email out to the board, just in case someone, it's easier for that.
Sure.
The nineteenth at seven, right?
Nineteen, seven PM, yep.
Short meeting, right?
Well, she's gonna bring her husband over. Okay, we have, at this time, we have, we have announcements. The holiday train, I think, was great, it looked, from my perspective, it looked fantastic, it was, it, it looked like there was a lot of people. It really seemed like there was a lot, a ton of people, I think everybody had a good time. I don't think we had any incidences with trouble or none that I heard of. It, it just was, it's a great time to be in Harland, I think, between having, you know, the holiday lights, the holiday train, it's just, it's, it's good times, and it's good to see everybody happy and the kids having fun, and Santa Claus was out there, so it went off very well. Along with that also, I guess I would like to extend my heartfelt thank yous and pride to trustee Landwear, who on this past Friday, after, I think it's fifty-two years, but I could be wrong by give or take a couple of years, who's counting after fifty-two, has turned in his paperwork of his non-candidacy and not having the intent to run again at the age of eighty-nine, and after fifty-some years on the village board, I cannot thank you enough and tell you how proud I am to serve and have served, and for the next few months, serve with you, Dick Landwear. I am sorry that there's not cake, you don't get cake till you serve out your term. No, honestly, I am, I can't tell you how lucky I can be myself, even though it'd only be two years, but to be on the tail as I begin my process and see you end yours, you know, it just, it's, it's neat to have served with you and thank you for everything that you've done for this village. I looked up the census and I believe there was nine hundred and fifty-six people in the village when you got on board, so now there's nine thousand.
You've really grown the village.
So, I don't really have many other announcements.
I wanted to say too about the holiday train.
Yeah.
Being on the front lines there, it was phenomenal this year. Everybody was behaved, everything went off flawlessly. Thank you very much to the Kiwanis Club and every other vendor that was there, we provided a nice service. Everybody seemed to have a great time, nobody was in a bad mood, even though it was, you know, cold out. I think it was a great event, great event.
So I'll add one more of the same thing for the train, only because I was there when the police from the train got off and they asked, how many fire department people do you have here tonight? And actually, Andy answered, and he said, that's pretty impressive, so even they were impressed on seeing our fire department out there and our police department, how much was there in force, and I'm going to give a shout out to Ryan, who really stepped up to coordinate it this year and did a phenomenal job. So, cool to see you.
Way to be.
And all the other, well, you can say Kiwanis and the bid and the rotary and the chamber, everybody, cuz it truly does take a village to make that come off the way it did, so.
Takes a lot of people.
Sure does.
Any other announcements? To all of you in Heartland, happy holidays and Merry Christmas, be safe, make sure that you keep an eye on your real Christmas trees so we don't have any fires, make sure not to drink too much agnog so we don't have to overburden our police department, let's stay safe and, and make sure that the kids get to have a great time, that everybody has a wonderful holiday season and a happy new year.
And pay your taxes.
You're supposed to say that on the ninth.
I will, but I didn't know if I was gonna be here, so I'm. I'm saying Merry Christmas, he could say it more than once.
I guess we can have the agnog till then. Tell them they haven't paid our taxes.
It's all about, show me the money. Any, no other announcements? Thank you, everybody, for, for tuning in at this time. We have a consideration. We have a consideration of a motion to recess to close session pursuant to state statutes one nine point eight five one C, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding the village administrator, annual performance evaluation, and to adjourn thereafter without reconvening into open session pursuant to one nine point nine five, section two.
Roll call, I.
You gotta make a motion first.
I move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, going to close session, may I have a roll call?
Trustee Anson?
Aye.
Trustee Doro?
Aye.
Trustee Myers? Trustee Landwear?
Aye.
Trustee Swenson?
Aye.
Trustee Walsiger?
Aye.
President Vanestow?
Aye, sorry. That's a gas.